Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Independent City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, January 14th, 2020, and there is no snow apocalypse, regardless of what TV may be saying out of Portland. But the records show that councilors are all here. Thank you very much for attending the work session. We've got a lot of work done downstairs. Council members, you have the minutes of the December 10th meeting in your council packet. Do they meet with your official okay?
I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
The motion second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Public comment. There's my pieces of paper. First, I'd like to have Kim Corliss. Boom, we get, we jump right to it. Good evening. Welcome to City Council.
Thank you. I'm here on behalf of the Independence Elks. I'm here with Tom Sager, our Chairman of the Building Committee, and Judith Rayhoo, and I am Chairman of the Board of the Elks. And we are here representing the Elks Lodge 1950. We understand that Lot 7A is under consideration to sell. Our current building located at 289 Main Street is very old and becoming quite expensive to maintain. For the past four years, we have been trying to sell our building, and we are now working with a local developer who is willing to build us a new high-efficiency building in exchange for our current property. This, however, is all contingent on the sale of Lot 7A. With a new cost-effective building, we'll be able to remain in the community and continue to work closely with the community activities. The Elks Lodge 1950 has been serving this community since 1955 and has done and continues to participate in many community activities. We are very supportive of the Santa Train Holiday Project such as gift food baskets, scholarships for high school seniors, and many, many others activities that we promote. We are looking for your support for the sale of Lot 7A so that we may continue to be a part of this amazing community. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming in, and thanks to all the Elks for the efforts and things that they do to make our community a wonderful place. Thank you very much for being in this evening. I'm going to have, from the Independence Downtown Association, Kate Schwartzler. Good evening, and welcome to council.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City staff. I just wanted to give you a quick update on the Independence Downtown Association. I handed out copies of our annual report. We have some exciting things that we'd like to share. We feel like we've been making a lot of good progress with events, and specifically want to thank the city for their continued support of the Downtown Association. Just want to call out a couple of things. One of the things this past year that has gone really well is increased coordination between the Downtown Association and also the city police and the public works as an effort to increase communication and then how we can best work together to make sure that our events are successful for the public in inviting people downtown. So we're really excited about that, looking forward to continue working with them in the future, and then also have really tried to promote our events to the community, and that's why social media has been important for us to track in terms of just getting the word out about our events and inviting the community to enjoy our downtown. And then also just want to point out that we were able to win an award from the Oregon Main Street for the Wachaharts fundraiser, which will be going up here shortly. So, thank you again for your support of the Downtown Association.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Congratulations on your award. Anybody else jumping up? Okay, we're going to continue moving forward under my mayor event. I have boards and committee appointments on page 13 for you. This is reappointments. Okay.
Sure. I move to reappoint the members listed on the, on this notice.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. We'd like to let people know that we still have openings on the Parks and Rec Committee, Heritage Museum, and we do have some openings on the Budget Committee, just to let folks know, and they can apply online.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Can we also add that we are still seeking a Winnipeg representative?
Ah, thank you.
Yes, and we would welcome anyone to apply. Public access is important in our community, and we would love to meet soon.
Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's good.
Thank you.
Put that on my list. Sorry, I write slow. Okay, council members, our city manager's been with us for a little bit over a year, and it's usually a good idea to get a chance to have a sit-down. And Mr. Pressmere and I have talked about this, and one of the things that's happening with evaluations nationally, both where I work and a number of other organizations, is that rather than getting fancy paper and pencil, it's scheduling a time where we, as a council, would sit down with the manager and talk things over that he would, in advance, provide a review of his work for the year. And so I'd like to make sure that it's all okay with everybody. If we can just move forward and schedule a time to do that and do it in a little bit more informal rather than going through lots of paper, pencil, and questions and things like that, because I have never found this council to be shy about having anything to say. Does that sound okay with everybody?
Would this be an open or executive session?
I think the manager's requested that it's an executive session.
Okay.
That's his prerogative, and so we'll work that in, in an appropriate time. We do have some full times coming up, but I didn't want anybody to think it's forgotten, and Mr. Pressmere and I will figure out a good time when we can spend some time to do that as a group.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, let's go to unfinished business, and...
Did we have a city manager report?
Oh, excuse me, I jumped ahead. My, my error. Mr. City Manager, I did not for, I just read my piece of paper wrong. I would never forget you.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilors. So I do try to keep my city manager reports brief. However, we did not have a meeting last time, and there's a lot going on, so I do want to make sure you and the community are informed about enough for a number of different things. So just some housekeeping things first. The COG, Council of Governments Dinner, is February 19th at the Kaiser Civic Center. Just let Karen know if you're interested in going, and she'll get you signed up. She needs to know before February 7th, that's the cutoff date for people to go. It is a good event, and a lot of people show up, and they do awards at that, at that time, and it went last year, and it was great. I'll mention something that Councilor Morton mentioned in the work session, and that is the Chamber Awards Dinner is March 13th, so you can go through the chamber and sign up for that if you're interested in going. Karen, are you going to kind of coordinate that for city councilors? So yeah, again, contact Karen if you're interested in participating in that event. A couple of announcements. The Heritage Museum Society received a $2,500 grant from the Polk County Coalition. That grant is for exhibit development and making the exhibits in the museum more interactive. And, you know, I think you know with the museum going on, we've really stepped up grant, writing proposals, the society's stepped up as well, and I think this is something they've gotten quite a bit in the past, but certainly every little bit helps to kind of get those exhibits up and running. Another announcement, on behalf of the Census Equity Funders Committee of Oregon, they were pleased to award $20,000 to the Independence Public Library to operate as a census assistance center for the 2020 census. This grant is funded by the pooled and line Census Equity Fund, a public-private pooled fund to support Oregon's Hard to Count campaign. Hashtag WeCountOregon. The United Way of the Columbia Lament is the fiscal agent and the backbone of the fund. So Ramon and some others went together, I think Karen helped out a lot in this as well, put together an application, and the United Way is kind of the fiscal agent, but essentially we get $20,000 to go and reach the hard-to-reach for the census, and it will be based out of the library is where they will have their operations, but certainly we're going to go to other communities and other places in the county, so it'll probably be set up to be somewhat mobile as well, so that network can get out. The city will need to either hire or contract with two part-time temporary employees in order to do that, so it'll be fully staffed. That's where some of the $20,000 goes to. There's also some marketing outreach funds that we have identified to be a part of that, as well as purchasing a number of technology devices. I think we've actually budgeted for 20 Chromebooks, because we, a lot of the census is moving to electronic this year, they're trying to get out of the paper, and so having people be able to come in and actually use Chromebooks in order to put their census information and have someone there to answer their questions as they're doing that, I think really lowers some of the barriers that some people have been concerned about. So this is a great win for the city, and I think a great win for everyone, and we're really excited to, to be able to host that, to actually kind of...
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Pressmere?
Yes.
Is, are there's going to be city part-time employees, or are they going to come through the United Way?
They will either be city or city contracted employees. We're kind of looking into what is best to do there. Contract employees or even the temporary employees are a lot, lot of time looked at as actual employees.
But the announcements will be available via the city website?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and we're gearing up to get that done, because we need to get those on sooner rather than later. There could be some, some tough positions to fill just because of the temporary nature of the position, but they're actually, you know, it's actually an exciting short-time term job for somebody who's, who's looking to do something. There'll be a lot of training that they need to do as well, obviously, if they're going to be a resource and answering questions and the expert, they're going to need to know their stuff, and so the census will be providing them a significant amount of training. We're going to try to get them on about two or three weeks before their start date, which I believe we're required under the grant to have them onboard by April 1st of this year. So we're, we're up and running pretty quick. We just found out about it this last week, and we're already trying to make plans to make sure that we're able to meet the grant requirements. Speaking of recruitment, the library manager position has closed, and we have had a number of good applicants. We are going to be interviewing four candidates this week, actually tomorrow, and there'll be a second interviews, probably next week is kind of what we've typically scheduled. Library board members will be a part of this. We'll also have some experts from some of the other libraries around to help us to make this decision. It's important to get the right person in this position, and so we're looking forward to getting those interviews done. I would have to say we got some really good candidates. I'm really excited about some of the, the applications that we got, so hopefully we can land exactly the right person and, and continue to move the library forward here quickly. I know the library staff would appreciate that as well. We continue on hiring. We have had some fairly significant, significant and challenging issues with our janitorial service, and we've contracted that out, and we have seen performance issues, which we've been working with trying to address them over a long period of time. You've probably seen that in the, the city management team meeting notes over and over and over again. We've been talking about this for many, many months, and the resolution that came up with, from them was to basically for them to double the price in order to provide essentially the same service. So we're going to try something different and see if this works or not, but we're going to actually go out and hire two temporary part-time positions to basically come in and do those services at least until the next budget year. We'll, we'll be evaluating whether this makes sense or not, how this works. That's why they're temporary in nature. If it doesn't work, then we'll, you know, probably go back to contracting, but we'll have some budget decisions to make coming up here, and I wouldn't want to commit to having an employee and commit you to ongoing costs for, for next fiscal year. But for this fiscal year, we were able to, to work this out, so it would be about a wash with the, the costs that we would be paying with the new rates that they were giving us, and if we can get better service and keep things equal, then that's the way we'll continue to propose to go. As you know, I'm not super excited about hiring new public employees, but in this particular situation, we don't have very many options out there, other than the services we're working with. Obviously, if we did, we would be looking at those, but our options are fairly limited, just because of the way that the state rules are, based on the people that you have to hire for, for these positions, if you're a public entity. So one thing that I have heard a lot about, and I think you guys have as well, and I've seen on social media and I've seen other things, is, you know, how well the city is communicating. And one of the, one of the comments that I've heard particularly in some of the meetings we've had here and talking to people is, you know, we have worked on really trying to do a lot more in the social media area, but a lot of people don't use social media, and they're not getting the information as well as they would like. And so that is a concern to me, and I'm sure it's a concern to you as well, that communicating with our citizens is, is an important thing, and trying to figure out the right balance to do that can, can somewhat be a challenge. But one of the things that we really want to do, because I've heard that people really do appreciate this River City Briefs, that Karen mostly works together. If you don't know, Karen pretty much does everything here at the city. You can't tell from what I'm saying tonight, but no, she does a lot. But the River City Briefs actually is a pretty good publication, but it's not getting to everyone. It goes out in utility bills, it doesn't get to the people that do the online billing. It also doesn't get to the people who are in an apartment complex who aren't getting a bill at all, because it goes to the complex, and they don't have the availability. So we're looking at kind of doing a couple of things. One is to reformat a few of the things in the articles itself. I think we're going to try to highlight certain portions, and I've lost my notes here. Oh, that's because I bolded it. We're going to try to highlight upcoming events and the public meeting schedule, put that kind of on the front page, make sure that it's highlighted so that whenever anybody gets that, that's something that they automatically know to go take a look at, or if they want to know what the upcoming events are, or what the public meeting schedule is going to be. It's always in the same place, they can always see it, they can go to it right away, and it can become a resource for them, so they're not having to go online, or to use some sort of electronic resources to get their information. The other thing that we're going to do is to create a community development information section. I've heard a lot of the things that people want to know more about is what's going on in community development in, in Independence, and so those can be mostly, you know, private development projects, but they can be a mixture of things as well, and, you know, whether it's an annexation or subdivision, or just, you know, something going on like the gate or something else. And so we will have a, a section of the paper that will highlight those community development projects, but behind that, we're also going to create something on the webpage that will even be more current, and so that portion of the River City Briefs will then refer people to the webpage if they want to get more information, because we, we really think that if that's what people really want to know, they want to be more involved in what's going on and, and know what's going on with these development projects, then we should provide that information, we should get that done. As far as getting it out to more people, we're looking at a couple of different things. One is distributing it to the downtown businesses. I've talked with Courtney and Ramon, and they're going to take this to the businesses in downtown where people tend to wait, or they just want reading material for whatever reason. We did that in the past, we haven't done it for a while, and so we want to get that in their hands. The apartments are a challenge, and so we're trying to figure out ways to do that. One thing we're looking at is potentially doing a parcel post, and rather than putting it in the utility bill, sending that out to everyone, that's going to have cost implications, which we probably would need to talk about during the budget process. We're still trying to identify those, what those are, but we're looking for ways to solve that issue, so to make sure that everybody that we possibly can has access to that publication, and then to beef up a little bit of the material that's there. So, and that's one of the things we're doing. We continue to hear that people, you know, would like to get an email, you know, when certain things are going on. We do have a system where if you want to sign up for information from, you know, the historical, you know, commission, or the library board, or council, or whatever, you can get emails out that way. We're looking, trying to figure out, well, what is it that people really want for information? It's hard, because they want what they want, but they don't want everything else, and everybody wants different things. So we're still trying to figure out how we might go about pushing information out, maybe through some sort of system, and how you can sign up for that, and how we would do that, so that's another work in process that we're doing as well. Couple of other announcements. We are going to put out here soon a request for proposals for concessions for the concert series. I've heard a number of people talk about wanting to make sure that they've had an opportunity to propose on providing essentially the beer at the concert series. I don't think that's been there in the past. We have taken a look at our current agreement, and there are not sufficient protections, we feel, for the city if something happens from a liability perspective. So we want to make sure that we put out a public RFP that we can then have an agreement that specifically deals with that one issue, and make sure that we have proper insurance in place from them, that we have the proper indentifications, and all the other pieces that need to be in an agreement where there is that kind of activity going on there. We currently don't have that, so it's our goal to get that in place this year before the concert series starts. So I'm sure there will be a lot of interest from different establishments in, in Independence in that, but we, we need to get it going, because we need to have the concert series move forward seamlessly, but we're going to be doing that, kind of along with that, that was tied in with the agreement that we had with Alex Trevino to, to promote, do the other things, so we're going to be working on that portion of the agreement as well. That agreement was a three-year agreement, but the money was only for one year, so we've had to real work on redoing that agreement anyway, so we'll be, we'll be figuring that out. And potentially, we may end up putting an RFP out for those services as well. If we do that, we'll be doing that very soon.
Mr. Pressmere, how do residents provide input on the concert series itself, the entertainment portion of it? Is there any mechanism in place?
You know, Alex, you know, kind of is responsible for, for taking that input and, and listening. Certainly Courtney and Sean play a role in that, so we, we do listen to that. I think it's one of those where we do get a lot of input, and people have different feelings on that, but certainly, I, I think probably the best place to go, probably right now, if they want to communicate with the city, would probably be either Courtney or Sean, to get them their information in, and we're, we're open to any good ideas that people have. But, but that's, that's kind of the process for now. The conversation of a frequent transit service between Independence Monmouth and Western Oregon has come up. Western Oregon University has come up a number of times. I think mostly people refer to that as the trolley. And in the last legislative session, $400,000 was allocated, $300,000, look at Sean, that number didn't sound right. $300,000 was allocated to start taking a look at what that might look like. Independence is a fiscal agent for that, but obviously, we're just the fiscal agent. There's a lot of partners involved in that chariot, some being, you know, very high on the list as well. And so we're going to be putting out a request for proposal to hire on a consultant to help us all understand what that might be, what the parameters might be, how that might look, just where it was going. It's not an area where we're, we have a lot of expertise. Also to identify funding sources and just everything else that would go along with running that type of system. So that's an idea, that we actually have some, some seed money to, to start, and so just want to let you know that there's going to be a request for proposal going out there. We have had our partners look at that, and, but that will be hitting the street soon, and hopefully, as that moves forward, we'll get more information about how to, to enhance that transit system between Markham and Western Oregon University. Speaking of requests for proposals, I told you I was busy. We are, we have a request for qualifications in this particular case for the museum. We're kind of at that threshold where we need to go out for a formal qualification proposal to get a architect onboard. Everybody's really excited to move forward on that project, but we really need to enhance, to hire someone who has a professional expertise to kind of advise us on how to lay that space out. If you go in there right now, it's just one rectangular inside with a, a small bathroom. And we need to figure out how to divide that space up and to do the tenant improvement. So we're really looking at this as a tenant improvement project. We have the shell. The shell's in pretty good shape. We'll have some HVAC, which is going to be significantly expensive, some electrical, finishing out the bathroom, but then what do we do with the other space so that we can make sure that we have office space, you know, space for exhibits, and then space for dealing with the different articles that the museum has to deal with. So we're really excited to get that done. I just want to let you know that there'll be a request for qualifications going out for that soon. Transportation System Plan. I mentioned last time that we signed the intergovernmental agreement, and we are working with the consultant, which is Kilsen and Associates, to basically get that project started. The plan will focus on vehicles and roadways, bikes and pedestrians, trails, transit, and transportation demand management techniques. So a lot of people think of the Transportation System Plan as just dealing with autos and maybe transit. It's not. It's actually the whole network of, of transportation modes that people use, and it takes all those into account. And, you know, specifically, we've heard a lot recently about the desire to have better trail systems and bike systems and pedestrian systems throughout the city, and so, you know, this is a very open project, process. There will be lots of public engagement, and we're really looking for people who have that desire to participate in this process and to make sure that their input's heard and that, as that plan is developed, the, those ideas are incorporated in the plan, it becomes a part of the final plan as it's adopted. It'll take a while, those don't go super quickly, but they're really important to understanding what we need to do in order to, to meet the needs of the community from a transportation perspective, and then also to figure out how we fund those needs moving We did receive one proposal for Lot 7 regarding the request for proposals that we put out. We put it out once, and then we put it out again with a deadline towards the end of the year. We sent that out to all the commercial realtors in the area. I talked to, to one, I know Sean talked to a couple more, and kind of the consensus we heard from them is, you know, it's a great area, this is a small, kind of narrow lot, and sitting in between everything else, and the market just isn't right there. But we did receive a proposal, which was actually a pretty good proposal, when it came, came back. It scored 71 out of 100 points. They did a lot of good work on showing that they had a clear understanding of Independence, and if it was implemented, how it would expand additional retail opportunities in the downtown area. And essentially, what they proposed is kind of a three-phase strategy. The first phase is basically a building, 4,500 square foot building for the Elks on the, I guess that would be the south end of Lot 7, and then building a public parking lot on the north end of Lot 7. So it would end up being a building on the south, a public parking lot on the north. That would be kind of the Phase 1. Phase 2 would then be to build a building where, behind where the mural is, coming off of Main Street, so the mural's there. The proposal was to build a building there. They were able to acquire that property, is my understanding, is through an agreement with the Elks, in order to, to do the Phase 1 portion of the project. And then Phase 3 would be actually refurbishing and redeveloping the Elks building itself. So that would really be three projects. It would add about 19,000 square feet of commercial area into the Old Town once it was completed. Their offer was $18.50 per square foot. That's higher than the current market for bare commercial land, but you also have to remember that Osprey Lane has been built, sidewalks have been built, utilities have been put in there, so it seems like the price is good. They would, of course, want credits back, their requesting credits amount back equal to the expenses that they're paying. Part, a lot of that... A lot of that money would go to the public parking lot, that's a pretty expensive project to do. $18.50 per square foot is, it's 10,000 square feet, so that'd be $185,000, what their offer was. The parking lot, you know, itself is over $100,000, and clearly, there's a public benefit there. And they also asked for some assistance relocating the power lines in that area. So, I guess at some point in time, I would like to kind of know if you would like to go to the executive session and talk about this, if you want staff to kind of start working with the developer and outlining what a development agreement would look like. I have to say, you know, after looking at what's proposed and where we're at and the timing, and I think you heard some testimony earlier from the Elks, you know, this project does make a lot of sense. We have a lot of tall vertical buildings in that area. If you build something that's a little bit smaller, 4,500 square feet, it would be two stories, but then you have the open parking lot area. It kind of keeps that area somewhat open, and with the buildings, you know, coming off of Main Street, I think some of those buildings have a desire to kind of open their back door to being more productive in the retail area and vending off that side. I think if you build something too big there or too grandiose, you're probably going to really block the views and really start to cramp that area. So, staff looked at the proposal, I said, like I said, it scored a 71. We felt it was actually a pretty good proposal, makes a lot of sense to us. You know, the Elks is not a retail establishment or something that's there, but it is a service that's been in this community for a long period of time, and so, we're looking for just for some direction from you if you want to, we would actually recommend kind of just going and working on a development agreement and bringing that back to you either in executive session or a public session, but I kind of want to get your feedback on what you guys thought about that.
Thoughts?
My preference is executive session.
I agree.
I agree.
So, would you prefer to go into executive session before we start working with the developer? Or, okay, is that what everybody's saying, or you want us to go work with the developer and then bring something back?
Tom, what were you saying?
I think prior to working up the agreement.
Okay. All right, well, we will work then on scheduling executive session and talk about what that agreement may entail and go from there.
Will work with the developer go fairly fast?
I think probably it will. The, I should have said this at the beginning, the proposer was Young Development, who is obviously doing the Osprey Point project along with some partners, so they know this area well. We've entered into a development agreement with them prior, so it will probably be modeled off that. The differences will be, you know, what the achievable's are and then what's that going to be tied to to make sure that we protect the city's interests and monies and make sure they do that, so.
And earlier this evening, when the Elk spoke, the person from the Elk spoke, we heard about Lot 7 and 8, but this agreement is just for Lot 7?
Yeah, I think she said Lot 7A, and I think that's because they're assuming Lot 7A is the southern portion. Right now, it's all one lot, but it could be divided into two pieces.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Lot 8 would be Osprey Point, I think that would be a challenge.
Is there any way we could get an update just on the work on Osprey Point from the Youngs?
Yeah.
At some point, even an email would be fine?
No, yeah, I'm happy to give it to you just publicly right now.
Oh.
So, we have actually spent a fair amount of time with Aaron as we've been trying to finish up the, some of the pieces of the development agreement to actually transfer the property to what is now what's called the tenants in common. So, we're working on an assignment to take from Young Development Group to take it to the partners who are actually going to be the financial resources and the construction resources behind that. Aaron is heavily involved in two of the three companies, Aaron and his wife, I should say, are heavily involved in two of the three companies that will be doing that. So, there's a definite relationship to that. And so, as we work through that, we, I think, have asked a lot of questions of them, and we've got a lot of answers, a lot of good answers. And so, we're kind of at that point right now where I think Aaron just needs to turn in the foundation and peer plans, which I think are, according to him, should be done this week still. And from there, we will be able to prove those probably within a few days, and then it's just the scheduling of their contract to get in. I think he told me that they're probably just a few weeks out. So, there's been a lot of things that we've had to deal with. When you're dealing with a site like this, you have, you know, just as much underneath the building constructions you do above the building in order to make sure that it all stays there. This is a four-story building, so it has a lot of mass, and the soils in that area just aren't that great. So, it's been a challenge, and I have to compliment Aaron, and I did at the chamber meeting, he's done a lot of really hard work to make this work and to get to the point where they are. So, we're feeling really confident that they're going to be moving forward on this really soon, and that'll be exciting for everyone. There will be some disruptions to the sidewalk, particularly there along C Street, and we expect a long closure. We're trying to get that closure done before the events start, and that's one of the reasons that we're all motivated to get this started sooner rather than later. But, in order to build the foundation walls for the building, they actually have to build a wall inside of that or outside of that, which will actually be in the right of way, and they've had a lot of issues coming up with that shoring plan. We've worked a lot with Kai and Public Works and with Steve, our city engineer, I think we've worked through all those details as well. So, those things just tend to track some projects down, and that's kind of what's happened, but we're pretty encouraged.
And just the sidewalk closure, there won't be any, like, is parking affected in that area when that happens?
It will be for a short period of time. When they're putting the pilings in for the shoring wall, there'll be a day or two where they're telling us that they'll probably need to take a portion of the street in the parking. We don't see any long-term parking closures, at least as far as I know, unless I'm, Kai's not here, so, unless I'm missing something, so.
Okay.
But, we certainly will try to keep everything as short as we can. Good question.
Questions for the manager?
I'm going to just add a couple of minor things if I might.
Sure.
First of all, I want to thank you very much for following up on the communication conversations that you and I've had. Really appreciate you and your staff working hard on looking to solutions to follow up on that, and I really appreciate that. Council members, the COG dinner that was mentioned at the very front end, I'm a board member of the Council of Governments, a past president, and it is a pretty good event, and you see lots of, some of you have attended, and this is something that I'd encourage you to attend. It's a nice event, it's in Kaiser, it's close, you get to see other people who are doing the same kind of things that you're doing, and so, that's really good. So, anyway, I just really want to say thank, and thank you for an extensive report. There's lots of meat here.
There is, but I think it's important that you guys know what's going on and that the community has an opportunity to hear it as well, so.
Thank you.
I'm sorry for the length, but.
No, it's good. Means good stuff's happening.
With that, do you have any questions for me or my staff?
No. Good. Okay, we're going to do council deliberation on the Brandy Meadows Appeal, and Mr. Evander. So, just to remind anybody, at the last meeting, we had public testimony from all the parties who wanted to testify, and now, we are into the portion for council deliberation, which, and we, and staff has, there's some questions that were asked of staff, and so, we will be visiting with staff here and getting some additional information here. There's no new information from the public that's allowed at this point. And Karen, have I covered all the parts that I have to, you guys, you know, land use stuff, there's lots of rules.
Nope.
Yeah.
So, Mayor, with that.
Please do.
With that comment, I'll just say before Fred starts, that he is passing out some additional materials, and he has three exhibits here. There's no new information in here, it's just information that he's tried to make more clear based on the conversations that he heard last time. So, we were careful not to introduce any additional testimony.
Thank you. I already appreciate the larger picture.
Me too.
The same pictures we had last time, but just bigger. I like bigger.
Yeah.
Right. So, yeah, so we had a public hearing on this on December 10th. We left that, from my recollection, there was essentially two things that you wanted clarified. One was clearer images that showed how the trail network would work. That is what I've tried to produce tonight. Definitely during the meeting, we heard the value of trails. We definitely understand that. What I just want to point out, as we look at these, I should have done them in chronological order. I'll do this. This is chronological order, starts right here. Let's, oh, okay. So, this is the first one, 2012 Plan. This is the Southwest Independence Concept Plan. You can see what was originally envisioned there. You can see the trail along the South Fork Ash Creek, you can see a trail along the west side of Sunset Meadows. In 2015, you can see how that was sort of revised as part of the Parks and Open Space Master Plan. You can see that the trail is still coming along the South Fork of Ash Creek, but in this image, this trail that comes from Mountain Fur, then winds through Sunset Meadows, and it comes this way and eventually connects to Mountain Fur, the road going out toward the river. And then.
I have a question, sorry.
Yeah.
So, it looks like there is maybe new information that I'm just hoping, because we didn't touch on the partnership with St. Patrick's on a park, that wasn't discussed at all?
This is just straight from the existing plan.
Okay.
Literally, the only thing that's different from this is it's just blown up. It's the same image, just blown up.
Maybe my eyes did not see that at all.
Yeah, and when you look at it really, I mean, it took me blowing it up to actually see that too, so.
Yeah.
And then, we have this here. This is how the current proposal would fit within the larger network, and you can see, again, the Inspiration Garden and Trail, you can see Sunset, or you can see Brandy Meadows portion of it.
Could you, would you mind, I, thank you. Maybe one of your colleagues would help hold you, hold it up for you.
For a chair.
There you go.
Put on a chair.
Thank you, Mr. Irvine. Thank you. Thank you.
Perfect. Now, you can see Brandy Meadows is right here, you can see how this is, this portion right here, and this portion right here. It's the same sort of concept, and you can see how it would, this is future development right here. This is not part of this subdivision. This would be future development, but then it would ultimately connect into Sunset Meadows and all that stuff. So, as we talked about, we have specific criteria that we have to evaluate the land use application on. Those criteria really refer to these plans right here, and as you can see, especially when we take the most recent plan that we have, the 2015 Parks and Open Space Master Plan, what the Brandy Meadows subdivision is doing is identical to what was envisioned in that plan. This one right here. That is the same exact thing as this, right? You'll see trail along South Fork Ash Creek connecting to Mountain Fur Park down through Sunset Meadows, right? You can see this here. Trail along Ash Creek, future trail along Ash Creek, connect to Mountain Fur down through Sunset Meadows. It's from staff's pers, based on all the comments that we got from staff's perspective, it is still consistent with our adopted plans. The second thing that we heard, I'll just say one more thing in regards to that. We agree with members of the public that additional trails are important, but we cannot go beyond what we have in adopted plans and requiring additional trails, right? It's, we have to rely on adopted plans to make our decisions.
Question, please?
Yes.
So, I just want to make sure I'm clear here, so that for evaluating this proposal, we can only look at what's currently in place, and if we wanted to do something different going forward, we could do that, but that's outside of this decision and goes into the, into, I think Mr. Pesamir and I were talking about, this goes into a legislative and it gets tying into the transportation plan, is that correct, Mr. Pesamir?
Yeah, well, I think the next opportunity to actually adopt a plan, and really probably even a more comprehensive plan that was done in the past, is really the Transportation System Plan. Because Transportation System Plan is looking, you know, citywide, how all the pedestrians and pathways, connections, bike connections work, as I mentioned earlier. And so, that is probably the best place to have that type of information that you would want. That's why I'm encouraging, you know, public participation and to make sure that as that gets developed, all that input gets in there, and we can come up with a solid plan that can be adopted, and then will be the roadmap forward for other future developments to make sure that when they come in, that they are complying with the wants and needs of the community. So, the Transportation System Plan hasn't been updated in quite a while, and so, these plans, we're kind of doing interim steps along the way, but with the Transportation System Plan, I think we'll have a really good place to go, this kind of one-stop, it's all shopping to make sure that the development plans that we get are complying with the requirements we're looking for.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Right, and so, the second thing that we heard, and can you go to that exhibit J there, Karen? The Trail Site Plan. The second question that we heard was questions, scroll down to the second one if you would, thank you. And again, this is just blown up image of the larger plan. This was in your packet already, but it was just small, you couldn't see the trail on it. Now, what I want, the second question that we had was questions in regards to the top of the bank and how we are measuring the 25 feet, and we got a note from a surveyor that was provided by the opponent's attorney that he brought into the record. We also heard from Kristin Larson with Lucky Mu. And both of them said, hey, you should consider where this top of the bank actually is. From the perspective of staff, we went back and we looked at it, we still think that the subdivision is going to meet it by the nature of the subdivision itself. When you measure from the top contour on the lot, there's not contours on that map, but when you measure from the top contour, you can get 25 to any, 25 feet to any property line on the property except for the one, the one larger parcel right there, and you can see it right in the image. I don't have a pointer, the one larger parcel. Can I get a pointer? This one larger parcel right there.
Okay.
That lot right there is for, a four-flex development is what their proposal shows. The lot itself is a half acre in size, so it's a very large lot. If, for some reason, they cannot get 25 feet right here, they have plenty of room to shift that lot line over to actually make it happen. Now, what we are proposing, so that's the first thing, we believe that that 25 feet will be met by the subdivision itself. However, we are proposing that, right at the end of this letter from the surveyor, he says, "The burden of discerning the nature of the city code and of showing its effects should be borne by the developer and the developer's professionals." Now, what we tried to explain last time, and I don't know if I did a good job, was this is to development. A lot line itself is not development because you don't actually disturb a lot line, right? It's just where the lot starts, it's not actually development. Development starts further on, it's where you construct a fence, it's where you're going to construct the trail, it's where you're going to construct the foundation of the building. It's where you're going to construct the foundation of the building. So what we are proposing is a condition, we're going to call it the Condition Number 22, that says, "Before building permit issuance, the applicant must show that future development along the South Fork of Ash Creek, including the trail, and any construction such as fencing on the individual lots will be set back 25 feet from the top of the bank or high watermark, whichever is higher." So essentially, what we're trying to say is you have to show us that the 25 feet is met before any sort of development can occur on the site. So again, we think it's going to be met by the subdivision itself, but we are proposing a condition that makes it clear that before any development of the site occurs, that condition has to be met. So with that, I think that those were the two major sort of outstanding issues that you folks wanted to consider and deliberate on more. Are there any questions about those things for me?
Please.
So I understand that Condition 22 is making sure they've met the 25 foot mark, but in your opinion, they've already met it, so it's really a mute issue then in your mind, right? You've said a couple of times now that you feel they've met it, so I'm confused as to what-
It's essentially ensure that they will meet it. I think absolutely they have met it.
But if it's the staff's discretion and you're convinced they already have, then that's our answer?
No, is that the, from the perspective of staff, they will be absolutely able to meet it. But we want assurance from a professional that they have met it, if that makes sense. I've, I have visited the site. I have looked at it. I have gotten a sense of where I think the-
Have you ever lived in a house in Independence that floods?
Uh, no, I have not.
Okay.
So I will, one thing I will just say is I think that this makes it really difficult to tell what the scale of this thing is. Now, I'll just say from here, from the, from where the channel of the stream is to that property line right there is 140 feet. It's 140 feet.
I'm sorry, point again.
From the channel itself to here is 140 feet. Up here, it's like 120 feet. Now, for a frame of reference, Inspiration Garden, where the building is, right? Where the building is in Inspiration Garden, when you measure from the channel to the property line, it's 135 feet, right? And I'm not talking about the property line for the building. I'm talking about the property line be, behind the building. That's 135 feet.
The resident, so the resident-
Before-
The residential people that live there from the, from the creek to there, and then the Inspiration Building is in the middle. Is that correct?
Right. That's exactly right. Now, the thing is, it's really easy to think that, oh, this is somehow really close to 25 feet. No, it's not. This from there to there is 140 feet, so.
So Council, I think to partially answer your question is, this condition will allow the city to have absolute certainty that the provision has been met. We can, as they go through that process, ask for additional exhibits, additional surveys, and if there are any discrepancies, this condition would then allow us to basically say, you cannot develop in that area, period. You will have to move your development back in order to stay out of that. So this is really a provision that would give us a lot of additional tools as we move forward with the next step of the process, which is when there is, you know, essentially submitting building plans and plans to make sure that absolutely this condition is met 100% of the time.
Additional questions for the staff person at this point?
So just to be clear, so who is deciding? Top of the bank or the?
So what, what, as the surveyor recommended, it says, "The burden of discerning the nature of the city code and of showing its effect should be borne by the developer and the developer's professionals." That was from the appellant's attorney who reached out to a surveyor. We agree that, that the developer should hire an engineer. It will be reviewed by me. It will be reviewed by our city engineer to make sure that it's not crazy, but that's, we concur with that assessment that it says right at the end of that letter.
Other questions? Since we are done with questions, we are now into deliberation. How would we like, conversation, action, whatever you would like to do? Conversation, please do.
I just want to recognize the hard work of the Planning Commission. I know that they have an incredibly hard job with the tools that have been given to them, and I think that we should explore the tools that have been given to them event, in the future and give them better tools.
Okay. Thank you. Additional comments, thoughts?
I, I still have the same reservations I had before that don't have anything to do with the 25-foot setback. My concerns still are that I don't think we've done right by Sunset Meadows. We have some issues we need to resolve there, and the fact that there is no low-income housing plan for Brandy Meadows is a no-go for me.
Okay. Unfortunately, neither of those are criteria under the appeal, and that's what we're addressing tonight. The Planning Commission, I sat through the public hearings that they sat through as well, in addition to the ones that we did here. They really did a phenomenal job. Notice that they only passed this on with 21 additional conditions that are all based on our code. So I applaud the Planning Commission for their good work. And based on what we can consider, I for one would like to move forward to a vote.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion? And help, I'm going to, what would be the appropriate motion, please?
I don't know if this is appropriate, but I have a draft one here to suggest that to move to uphold the decision of the Planning Commission on the proposed subdivision, file number SUB 2019-1, adopting findings and conditions of approval as stated in the staff report.
I like that wording very well.
Does, does that, does that motion include the-
Condition 22.
I would like to add Condition 22 to that motion.
Yes, I would too.
Yes.
See where we're-
Conditions of approval, including Condition-
22?
Number 22.
Does that sound all right with staff on this side of the room?
Yeah, it does. I think she covered that when she said in the staff report, but I think it's good to make it sure it's crystal clear that that-
Very clear issues are in the staff report.
Could you read it one more time, Karen? I'm sorry.
Please, go ahead. It's okay.
Move to uphold the decision of the Planning Commission on the proposed subdivision, file number SUB 2019-1, adopting findings and conditions of approval as stated in the 114 2020 staff report and including Condition Number 22.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you, yeah.
Does that make, is that the motion you want to make?
Yes, attach my name, please.
Thank you.
That's the motion that I would like to second.
And I have a motion to second, okay? Is there further discussion? Do you have anything else they'd like to say? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
I'd like to just, thanks, go ahead.
Ransom Smith, please.
I'd just like to thank staff for clarifying the north-south trail a little bit with a bigger map. And that helped quite a bit, so.
It did.
I, I join with that. I also join with, I know several members of the Planning Commission are here. Thank you for your efforts on this. I also want to speak to the folks who spoke to us last time. We did hear what you had to say, and I, I really want you folks, and I think staff has already reached out to many people already to, to ask people to be engaged in the Transportation System Plan that is coming up because that is, as we were told by our attorney last time and reaffirmed tonight, is the opportunity where we can make any additions, changes, mess with the current plan that's there so we can make sure we get all the stuff, technical term, all the stuff we wanted there. Mr. Pesamir?
Yeah, the one thing I did not mention and I should have is that when we developed our proposal for the Transportation System Plan, we did ask that a specific look be done at the south concept plan area to make sure that we had additional resources that went into taking a look and making sure that the connections are. Since it's all new down there, we want to make sure that connectivity is good. So, so we'll be able to really focus a lot of area on their, that area. But, you know, the transportation system covers the whole city, and so it's not just about that area. I know that people are really interested in getting from that area to downtown and getting to schools and getting to, you know, where they could potentially shop. So I think it's really important that we look at all the modes of travel and figure out how to get this area off to a continued progress and then, and then extend that throughout the entire city.
That Transportation System Plan will also deal with east-west, with the issues related going east-west?
Absolutely.
Because we know that that is an issue for lots of people. And so we, we have heard that. We understand that. And there are lots of efforts going to, to try to improve the east-west. Crossing a rail line is one of them.
And does that also include some communication and coordination with our sister city?
Yes. They'll, they usually sit on, we usually would invite them to be on a part of our technical review team because it's really important that their Transportation System Plan is informed by ours. But the timing isn't going to be the same for the two cities, but it's important that we know what's going on. It's important that they know what's going on.
Thank you.
And they were involved in the last, in our last one in 2010.
Good, thank you.
Okay.
And will the fire chief and the superintendent of the school, this school district be involved in that as well?
To the extent that they want to be, yes.
Okay. Well, all you can do is invite.
Would anybody object if we took a five-minute one? We're going to recess for five minutes, and let's keep it to about five or six, please?
Good.
Okay, we're back in session again. Mr. Pesamir, I think you have the next one, which is a proposed street vacation.
We're going on vacation.
Oh, no, that's what I thought. Should be a hyphen between vacation. On my climb feet.
Yes, well, if it snows, well, I want to go on vacation, right? So we'd like to see what happens. So this is a pretty straightforward application, and Karen did a lot of the work on this. Cities are pretty reluctant usually to give up right-of-way that has been dedicated if there is ever any conceivable use of the property. This particular property is kind of adjacent to Ash Creek, and it's my understanding that it kind of sits a fair distance above Ash Creek. Public Works has looked at this fairly extensively, and there are no utilities in there. There's really no plans to ever put any utilities in there. I looked at this because, and talked to Sean, because, you know, potentially you could see connectivity between this property or this right-of-way and Highway 51 for the Ash Creek Trail, but the topography just isn't going to support that. So when they looked at the Ash Creek Trail, it's good to go south of that, along, you know, up the side there, crossover probably in a couple of places. So they made a proposal or a petition to vacate this right-of-way. Staff has looked at it really carefully and sees no future benefit for the, for the city to continue to have that right-of-way. This is a petition, and this is not the final action. Essentially, this would come back for a public hearing, which we are trying to just set a date certain for at this meeting. And so really, that's the action that we're requesting tonight is to motion to set a public hearing for February 25th, 2020, to vacate this right-of-way.
Questions for staff? Seems pretty straightforward. This is an action item. If somebody would like to suggest that, please?
I move to set a public hearing for February 25th, 2020, at 6:30 PM to consider vacation of a portion of Albert Street.
Second? I have a motion second, discussion. Hearing, no discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Ms. Butch, I think it's you.
Evening.
It's nice to see you for your annual fee discussion.
Yes. What do I have first on the agenda?
You have the, the revised, revised fee schedule?
Schedule, okay.
Yes, please.
There's several items in this, this time for the fee schedule. We usually try to come to you a couple of times a year with some of the revisions. Of course, this time of year is always the water and sewer rates. This year, staff is proposing to bypass any adjustment to the water rates. That being because revenue is holding, the, the loans to Minnet is holding to about budget. So there's no, currently, there's no big projects in water right now, so things are going well. We've got, you know, a lot of developments are kind of making up for increase in revenues and, and that sort of thing. Where in sewer, we've got these, the big projects, these bigger projects are in answer to a lot of the development we've got, have going on, and so we still need to be doing these incremental increases for the sewer. So beyond the water and sewer rate adjustments, where we're not doing water, we have a couple different items. We want to add the SDC fees have not been in our, our fee schedule in the past. We want to get those onto the fee schedule. Over the last few years, we keep identifying different fees that we are charging, and then we realize that, oh, yeah, well, they're not on the fee schedule and they need to be according to our ordinances. So as we identify those, we're trying to get those to you. SDC fees in the past have been increased in the spring, or late spring, early summer, and it is adjusted according to the Seattle CPI. And according to our ordinances, they're supposed to be adjusted in January. So we're doing all of that now. We're going to get them onto the fee schedule and do that adjustment, and the adjustment, proposed adjustment is according to the Seattle CPI for 2019. The other item that we wanted you to look at was eliminating the interest charges for our court fines. We feel that we will have more successful, more success in collecting on some of those older fines and incentivize payments because we have many that are making minimum payments, but the minimum payments are barely covering the interest that gets charged. And it is a very tedious manual, labor-intensive item that doesn't generate too much income. And with that also, we are looking at changing our collection agency, and our collection agency will then do the interest on their side. We won't have to worry about any of that, so we take it completely off of our fee schedule. Those are the highlights.
Questions for staff?
The sewer, if, the sewer increase, that's part of the water bill, is it not the sewer rate?
Water, sewer, and storm is all on your water bill.
Is there any, is there any intent to notify consumers beforehand that this is going to happen because we all know how, how volatile the water bill is?
Right. We advertise it with the, the notice here. Did we put this in the newsletter?
I don't believe we did.
I don't, I don't believe we did.
But there'll still be time because these take effect when?
Pardon?
I'm asking, these take effect when?
First of February.
Okay.
I would, I would recommend social media because this is going to be a huge thing. This is going to, people complain constantly about the water bill.
Yeah.
I don't know what the actual cost will, the increase will be per consumer, but regardless of what it is, it's going to be noticed.
Yeah, we'll be happy to, to send that out and then also include a description in the water bill and do whatever we can to get the information out.
As far as the court fees and the interest, you're not going to charge the interest, but somebody's going to charge interest. So are people still going to be required to pay interest on that?
Right. It will be done if, in the case where we send out a collection to the collection agency, at a certain period of time, we send those to the collection agency, the collection agency will start charging the interest.
Just to follow up, so I understand if someone is making their regular monthly payments, they don't lapse on their payments and are never sent to collections, they're just paying on their base fine at that point?
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
Except now they'd make better progress on the baseline if we eliminate the interest?
Yes.
So there's no interest involved until they go to collections, correct?
If, with this proposal, yes.
Right.
And it also saves a boatload of staff time.
Yeah.
Yes.
And removes a potential barrier to somebody driving legally, which I think helps.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Additional questions? Before we get to votes, is there any public comment on the fee schedule today?
I'd like to know with...
Please step to the...
My name's Ann Scheck, Tranmart News and Publishing. I did not hear the amount of the increase in the sewer. I know there are people that watch online and will tune in maybe tomorrow for the replay of this meeting, and I just wondered if we could get that amount.
So the, I have it here, the residential base monthly is changing from $49.89 to $51.96.
That's correct. It's a 4.15% increase.
$2.07.
On a...
Resident base.
Base.
Yeah. Additional? Okay, I see no other public comment. Counsel?
I did have one question.
Oh, please do.
I'm sorry. The start date for initiating the new rate, does it have to be February 1st? Is that in statute, or...
It is not in statute. It can be whatever council...
It seems like it might be more prudent to start at March 1st, so we have a month to be able to notify people.
I'd agree with that.
And that way it goes out in River City Briefs, because I know I got River City Briefs via email this month.
Me too.
And I was super stoked to see that. So that would be one avenue to get that out, and then, of course, the Nextdoor app and all the regular social media.
Sure, so would it be fair to just start the sewer rate increase in March and start the others in February, so we can move on with the fines and...
Yeah, because the sewer's the one that's going to have the most immediate impact on...
Would you like a motion framed that way?
Yes, please.
I move to adopt Resolution 20-1520, amending the fee schedule as presented, with the exception that the sewer rate increase would begin March 1st.
Second.
I have a motion, second, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Supplemental budget, Ms. Butch, you get to do this, there will be a public hearing part of, after the staff report.
Yes, thank you. We've got three items on the supplemental budget, they're big items, so we wanted to bring them to you now, rather than waiting until towards the end of the year when we traditionally do our budget adjustments. Primarily, it's the museum and making official into our budget the purchase of that property and the financing thereof. And additionally, we have, we received after the preparation and adoption of the budget, we received a community development block grant in the amount of $400,000, and it's a pass-through grant where we receive the money, but then we give it out to the organization that's actually working on the project, and this is for affordable housing. The other item is, we already received in the funds, the $300,000 for the trolley, and so we need to adopt and appropriate those funds for expenditure.
Questions? Is there any public comment on this?
I just wanted to make a comment there. Everyone knows where I've been with the museum, so I don't need to belabor that, but I am going to be a yes vote on this, because I think affordable housing and the trolley are very exciting for our community.
Or the frollie.
The frollie.
The frollie.
The frollie.
And the affordable housing is not just limited to us, it's part of a regional effort, and so we have the agent for that. Okay, close the public hearing, got the questions done, this is an action item, if someone would please suggest the action.
So I move to approve Resolution Number 20-1521.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries, thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Please do, oh, excuse me, announcements? Oh, yes, yes, excuse me, Ms. Karen?
Excuse me, I forgot, city manager just reminded me that in the fee schedule resolution, there, part of the fee schedule is that there is an agreement for payment of land use fees, and Section 5 in there needed to be updated to include statutory language that has been changed, and I do have a copy of that for you, but it doesn't change the fees at all, it's just the statutory language that is now required.
Oh, so we need to officially say we like it?
Yes, yeah, Mary, I think you would want to go back and...
Redo the...
And...
Do the motion.
And redo that motion to include this language, just to make sure it's official.
So, Section 5 is what has changed. Page 183, it replaces the, Section 5 of Page 183, so Section 5 in this is going to be newly updated.
Okay, it's standard legalized.
So we're basically, we're changing the language to bring us into compliance with new state laws, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, that's correct.
So if someone could help with the motion here?
Yes, I can.
Sure, Mary, I think to be official here, you probably should open up the public comment period again on this, and then someone can make a motion to include this.
Okay, since nobody knew what the public, tell us again what this is, give me three or four lines.
Sure, well, essentially, there is a part of the agreement in the back of the fee schedule is some language, and our city attorney today noticed that the arbitration language didn't meet the current state law, and so she just updated the arbitration language to meet the rules and make sure that it's official.
The language on the land use application, and it's Section 5, you'll find it on Page 183 of your packet. And so the new language that Karen passed out there just replaces that portion of that language.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure that...
So then my motion should...
Hold for a second, please. Anybody have any, want to make comment on the new Section 5 we're going to have to add in?
No.
Is there anybody in the public that has anything to say? I wouldn't think so, but is there anybody?
I was just kind of wondering what the substantive change, is it just relating to new OR number?
The ORS number is in the March part of it.
Okay, so Counselor Morton, I think you were going to make a motion here.
An amended motion.
Yes, please.
I move to amend my motion to read, I move to adopt Resolution 20-1520, amending the fee schedule as presented, with the exception of the sewer increase being enacted on March 1st instead of February 1st, and the change is prescribed in statutory language to bring us in compliance with state law on the agreement for payment of land use application fees.
Second.
Ms. Karen, does that satisfy what you need?
Yes.
Thank you. I have a motion and a...
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion? Getting all the papers done, the I's, T's dotted, and the I's crossed. There you go. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Mayor, I just wanted to say thank you to the city for their help this past weekend with the volunteer recruitment fair. We had a great turnout, you were there, obviously you know this, but we had 15 groups show up, and between the 15 groups, they signed up 42 people either to volunteer or for additional information, and many of the groups have asked that this be an annual event.
And I want to just note that when you heard from your commission that there was some need, and you jumped in and helped drive this along with many others, so I just wanted to recognize your part in all that.
It was a win-win for everybody.
There's good. Additional announcements?
Mr. Pesamere already made mine.
Wow, you are a...
Just super quickly, I wanted to thank you for having some video of that event posted online. I had one of my young friends say, I missed it, who was there, and I sent her the video link, she watched it, and I referred her to six agencies that she's interested in working with.
It'll be bigger next year.
Yes, if there's nothing else, all in favor?
Aye.
We're done.